Good evening, everybody, and Happy New Year. Thank you for coming out on this cold evening, and you diehards, two meetings. But at least it's warm in here, right? Okay, Madam Clerk.
This meeting is being held in accordance with the Open Public Meeting Act and JSA 10:4-6, edsec, notice of which was sent to the record in the Star Ledger and was posted on the Municipal Boardroom Board.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Pataglia, Deputy Mayor Canestrino, Councilmember Sims, Councilmember Keeling Gettis, Mayor LaBrus.
Here. Would everybody please rise for the flag salute?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and the due republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. There are no proclamations. We're going to split the approval of the minutes, so I need a motion to approve the Cal meeting from November 10, 2015.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Aye.
Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Keeling Gettis.
Aye.
Abstain.
Thanks, thank you. That's why we did that.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye. And now I need a motion for the regular meeting, November 10, 2015.
Offer.
Second. Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Aye.
Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Keeling Gettis.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye. Okay. Moving further on, let's go to the manager's report, please.
Okay, I will add one issue on number three. The first is, obviously, the Building Department update from the 21st of December through 1-116. Twenty-one notices written, sixty-eight inspections, nine CCOs, and three summons is written. Just to give you an update, this is a good thing, I like to report on good things, is that remember table-to-tables, bag-a-lunch fundraiser? Five hundred and forty dollars.
Nice.
Very nice.
So if you figure ten dollars a lunch, fifty-four people participated.
Very good.
And then, just to give you a budget update for 2016, the state has finally modified their procedures. It used to be we had introduced in February, but they always put it off. Well, now, the introduction, it will be in beginning of March. We're scheduling for the first meeting in March, and then we'll hold the budget hearing scheduled will be for the first meeting in April. The staff is working on the budget. Jim and I are in the process of trying to restructure it in a different way that was done before, and trying to get line items lined up to where the expenditure should be, which has taken a lot of time. I anticipate that Jim and I will be calling a finance committee meeting in February and go through our concepts to make sure that the finance committee is informed and we get there, at least their concurrence. So that's an update on Budget 2016.
Okay. Is there anything else?
That's it, Mayor.
All right. Moving forward, let's do Resolution 01-16.
This is a resolution for the final adoption of Ordinance Number 66-2015, an ordinance amending Part II entitled General Legislation, Chapter 170 entitled Vehicles and Traffic, for the City of Hackensack Municipal Code to amend Section 49.2 entitled Parking for the Handicapped. This ordinance has been advertised pursuant to law and now falls for public hearing.
Okay. May I have a motion to open this to the public, please?
I'll offer.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Aye.
Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Keeling Gettis.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye. Anybody who'd like to speak on this ordinance, and this ordinance only, please come forward, give your name and address to the clerk. Seeing none, motion to close to the public.
Offer.
Second. Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Aye.
Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Keeling Gettis.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye. I need a motion to adopt Resolution 01-16.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Aye.
Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Keeling Gettis.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye.
Be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Hackensack, County of Bergen, and State of New Jersey that Ordinance Number 66-2015 has passed its second and final reading and is hereby adopted.
Thank you. Resolution Number 2-16.
This is a resolution for the introduction of Ordinance Number 1-2016, an ordinance amending Part II entitled General Legislation, Chapter 170 entitled Vehicles and Traffic, of the City of Hackensack Municipal Code to amend Section 49.2 entitled Parking for the Handicapped.
Have a motion, please.
I'll offer.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Aye.
Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Keeling Gettis.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye.
Be it resolved that the above ordinance being Ordinance 1-2016 as introduced is now pass on first reading, and that said ordinance shall be considered for final passage at a meeting to be held on January 26, 2016, at 8:00 PM or soon thereafter, as the matter can be reached at the regular meeting place for the City of Hackensack, and at such time and place all persons interested be given an opportunity to be heard concerning said ordinance, and that the city clerk be and she is hereby authorized and directed to publish said ordinance according to law, with a notice of its introduction and passage on first reading and of the time and place when and where said ordinance will be further considered for final passage.
Thank you. Resolution 3-16.
This is a resolution authorizing tax refunds.
Have a motion, please.
Offer.
Second. Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Aye.
Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Keeling Gettis.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye. Resolution 4-16.
This is a resolution authorizing renewal of Bergen Risk as a third-party administrator for city's worker compensation, general, and automobile liability insurance.
Motion, please.
Offer.
Second. Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Aye.
Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Keeling Gettis.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye. Resolution 5-16.
This is a resolution authorizing the transfer of 2015 budget appropriations.
Have a motion, please.
No.
Second. Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Aye.
Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Keeling Gettis.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye. Payment of bills, Resolution 6-16, please.
Resolution authorizing payment of bills. Current fund is $251,775.24. Rant has nothing. Payroll is $3,299,99.9. Public parking system is $6,212.37. Capital, $176,883.79. Escrow has nothing. Trust account is $173,832.80. Total expenditure is $3,898,803.29. Inter-funds and transfers is $136,477.82. We need a motion.
Have a motion.
I'll offer.
Second. Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Aye.
Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Keeling Gettis.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye. Resolution 07-16.
This is a resolution authorizing the 2016 temporary budget.
Have a motion, please.
Offer.
Second. Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Aye.
Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Keeling Gettis.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye. Okay. Anybody, we have the consent agenda coming up. Does anybody need anything pulled before we move forward? Seeing none? Please go forward with the consent agenda.
Okay, the consent agenda for the following items are considered to be routine in nature and will be enacted in one motion. Any items requiring expenditure are supported by certification of availability of funds. Any item requiring discussion will be removed from the consent agenda, and the consent agenda items will be reflected in full in the minutes, including any exceptions and or additions. It consists of Resolutions Number 8 through 17, which are: Resolution 8 is a resolution supporting policy for divvability on the Hackensack River for all future river projects; Resolution 9-16, a resolution authorizing a leave of absence for Regina Angelo, the deputy city clerk; Resolution 10-16 is a resolution authorizing proposed Bergen County Community Development Grant for 2016; Resolution 11-16 is a resolution authorizing the 2017 Hypota Grant; Resolution 12-16 is a resolution authorizing the release of a performance bond for 239 Berry Street; Resolution 13-16 is a resolution authorizing release of a performance bond for 61 Kansas Street; Resolution 14-16 is a resolution authorizing release of escrow for 1 Essex Street; Resolution 15-16, a resolution authorizing the issuance of RFPs for operation and management of data processing services; Resolution 16-16 is a resolution approving local supplement violations bureau schedule of fees; and Resolution 17-16 is a resolution authorizing housing authority appointment.
Okay. Have a motion, please, for the consent agenda.
Offer.
Second. Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Aye.
Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Keeling Gettis.
I have one I want to vote no on. Can I do that?
Remove from the consent agenda.
Oh, shit.
You can remove it.
Can I remove it?
Which one would you like removed?
1716.
Okay.
The rest is aye.
Call for a vote on the consent agenda as amended?
Yes, I need a vote on the consent agenda as amended, leaving out Resolution 1716 to be voted on separately, please?
Motion.
Motion, please?
Offer.
Second. Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Aye.
Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Keeling Gettis.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye. Now we need a motion.
A motion.
Actually, you need to read, reread Resolution 1716 separately.
Well, we still need, okay, 1716. This was a resolution authorizing appointment to the housing authority.
Have a motion, please?
Offer.
Second. Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Aye.
Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Keeling Gettis.
No.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye. Now, do we have to redo the original consent agenda?
No.
All right, we're good.
As amended.
All right, very good. Need a motion to open to the public, please?
Offer.
Second. Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Aye.
Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Keeling Gettis.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye. At this time, anybody from the public who'd like to speak, please come forward to the podium, give your name and address to the clerk. You have five minutes. I was just about to say, seeing none.
Regina De Pasco, Parker Avenue. Okay, first, on what happened at the end of the going into close about the resolution. I did send a message to NJ5. You guys are familiar with that, John and Kathy, you used to, you know, partake in that. Not legit, according to Walter Lurs, okay? We're supposed to be transparent. Everything I find says, you should give us as much information as possible, should identify litigation, identify contracts even. So hopefully, you're not going in that direction with that. But I have, John Pap, I'm waiting to hear from him too, and John and Kathy, you used to be on this side, fighting for transparency with previous administration. I would think you know where I'm coming from on that. Mr. Trost, I did look at the video. I never said forced. I think you owe me an apology.
Forced? Might have to look at the tape.
I think you owe me an apology.
I don't have the information.
Not, not, you, you can't man up and give me an apology.
If I know it's true, I'll be happy to do that.
I lie, right?
Enforce or force?
I never said either, actually. I said, is there a plan?
I will look at the tape, and if it is, I will tell you sorry.
Oh, okay. That was about Main and Bridge. I had been talking about these reports, and I wanted to know if there was a plan there. This is from Alirelli, June 22. The fence will remain there until there's a review of the engineer's report. I don't know if there ever was an engineer's report. What I was referring to from the zoning attorney said, the plywood barriers stay in place for two more weeks, then there should be a site inspection to determine whether the barrier may be replaced with standard construction fencing, which is what we've been saying should have been there all along, but somebody decided, let's paint it, you know? So, you know, I just feel like the rules got bent. There are all these, look, this is all emails, reports, whatever, none saying that, let's keep it up and paint it. If you have one that says, from a professional, that says, let's keep it up and paint it, I never got it. Standard construction fencing is chain link fence, okay? And, you know, it's up there, it's art, it's whatever, but how it happened? How did this happen? When it's been questioned for months and months and months before? It was being questioned, why is plywood there? Then, you know, decide to do it whichever way, you know, for whatever reason. I did want to say Happy New Year to all, okay? And I'm hoping for a year where the average citizen, the average citizen, has a little bit more feeling of ownership here, a little bit more feeling they're being considered when decisions are being made. There are several things that happened previously that, the ambulance, that's the biggest one to me. The average person, I felt, was not, not taken into consideration on that. I hope for a little bit more, or actually, less of antagonistic. I'm trying. I just ask questions, and, you know, and I know something is, I know something is. But I did want to say about the ambulance, the procedure, it's still not prominent on the website, okay? That was brought up at the last meeting, that people should know. But also with the recent news, two dollars and 50 cents a bed per day, that's peanuts, but it's better than nothing. But it's not passed completely, but I was just hoping we get something, we get something. Thank you. I think I'm done.
You.
Good evening and Happy New Year, and I came out on this cold night only because I'm very concerned about the safety of that corner and the liability that this council is put upon themselves. When the person who owns the property came, I didn't come to the last meeting because I was very busy, but the meeting before, when the property owner came, he told you people that you can see behind the fence. You cannot see behind that wall. There was a space there, three feet, that was chain link, that if the cop passed, he has to stretch his neck to see what's happening. You can kill somebody behind that wall. There's no way that you know what's happening behind that wall. The other thing that I questioned Mr. Trost on, and I'm still really upset about, because we're bending the codes, we're bending the rules, we know that sidewalks have to be 48 inches a minimum, but you're just, you're just doing that as minimum when there was three feet more that we lost. The wall that's currently there now is three feet onto the right-of-way. Three feet makes a big difference, because if two people are walking together and somebody wants to pass, they have to step out into the street. That includes carriages or people with small children. And now, when the snow comes and we have to plow, you're not going to be able to use that sidewalk at all. The reason, I have no idea why that fence is still on public right-of-way. It should be chain link, you're hiding behind art, this man is allowed to do all these things that nobody else could ever do. It shouldn't be for the sake of art that we're letting this, this whole corner be a disaster. I sent you a picture, I sent the mayor a picture of cars parked on the sidewalk there. It's getting, it's like the ghetto, it's too dark, I asked to put more lighting there. It's pitch dark, it's very dangerous. The two lights that were there are gone, they were mowed down when the fire happened. The site stood like, was a disaster from April to November 11th, when the fence was moved, when the wall was moved back, the barricades were moved back a little bit, and those barricades should not be there. We should put that back to its original state until whatever happens, happens. It's no longer, it's no longer demolition zone, it's no longer construction zone. All the other construction that's happened in Hackensack, it's been cleaned and chain link fence has been put up. There's no reason why this has to have special privileges. Number one thing is that there's three feet more that they need for the walk that the fence is on. Number two, you cannot see behind that wall. Somebody can get murdered behind that, it's all, it's all fenced in, they can get back there and do whatever. There's a big hole there, and no demolition. The last 10 demolitions, and I could cite them all, in Hackensack, nobody has left a hole. I don't care what's going to happen in the future. Keeping in mind that that same location had garbage cans there, they shouldn't have been there for seven years, because they have special privileges. And if this is what people who want to develop our city are bringing to us and dictating, this is a shame. It's, that whole corner is a disaster, safety-wise, aesthetically, and everything else. So I just wish Mr. Trost, I know, you've told me that 46, 48 inches is right, but the original setback is three more feet, and that wall is three feet onto public right-of-way, and it shouldn't be. When it snows, where's the snow going to go? When they plow, how are people going to walk? Like, one foot in front of each other? You can't navigate that sidewalk, and we need those extra three feet. And I just, I just, you know, when you provide you with certain information and you make decisions, the information has to be accurate so that you can make intelligent safety decisions. And also, this whole city is stacked against the taxpayer. It's all, we're all going in the route of redevelopment, and we're paying taxes and we're not being representative. I think somebody should sit in these meetings and represent the public, because it's too stacked against us. I think it's taxation without representation, using a lot of our money for the developers, and we're being put on the back burner. I think it's time that the people of Hackensack should have some more say with this development, because we're not, we're not, you know, it's, it's all going, we spent a lot of money on the Atlantic Tree Park, too many lights, too many trees, and now this corner, that's a disaster. Nobody's packing this room, and the people that packed that room are not people that pay taxes. They were people that, for their own reasons, wanted, wanted that park to be developed. So I really think that some of these meetings should have some more representation from, from we, the taxpayers, because for every person that's come in and three people are leaving. It's getting very hard to live in Hackensack. The people are on fixed income, they're having a hard time paying their taxes, and the people who are here are leaving because they can go elsewhere. One of my favorite restaurants left on the corner because they couldn't afford the rent. It's getting to be too pricey. We have to think of the people that are here, have to think of the people that have been here, been faithful. We can't spend our money and our time on the developers. They have to give us something. They can't be, they can't be like parasites. It has to be a symbiotic relationship, where we give and take from each other, and we need to, you need to be more transparent in that, in that area. Okay, thank you.
Which restaurant was that in Southwood, if I may ask?
Excuse me, sir?
Could I ask you what restaurant that was that left?
Yeah, Bacconies.
Okay. You are aware that was a rent issue?
Yes, because the rent went up, because his taxes went up, and people, and people leaving all the time because taxes.
His rent was excessively high, from what I heard.
Yes, and because.
Not because of taxes.
Because the taxes went up and the landlord had to do it, and there's a couple of other places on Hudson Street, the same thing happened. When the taxes go up, the landlord raises the rent, and it's getting to be that it's very hard to live in Hackensack, it's very pricey. And we who have been here will just, you know, you're not being faithful to us. But this, the safety issue needs to be addressed.
Your five minutes is up.
The wall has.
I'm just going to answer the Bacconi issue real quick, because I happen to be friendly and know him very well. He was being, and I'm not going to say, excessive, excessive rent in that restaurant, not because of taxes, no, please, not even go there, because the amount of rent he was paying was, two months would pay the taxes on, on that whole building.
Just to inform the council that the construction official and the zoning official have been out at 76 Main Street, and there is no violations.
Next.
Next, please.
Next.
Okay, I'm Rich Servo, Spring Valley Ave, Hackensack. I guess I wish everybody a Happy New Year. Mr. Trost, Mr. Carver.
Thank you.
Mayor.
Sir.
How are you?
Same to you.
And it's a good time to reinvent yourself, move in a different direction, do, do things differently, see things differently. So it's a great way to start, it's a new year, great. I hope you can, with this new year, start maybe fighting for the people of Hackensack instead of the developers, the hospital board, the, the union leaders, McDonald's. So please, fight for the people of Hackensack, they're the most important, okay? Also, I wanted to mention that, I want to mention a justice, Judge Learned Hand, who was a federal appeals court judge, a very brilliant jurist, he was known as the 10th Supreme Court Justice, but was never appointed to the bench. And he, and he wrote a book in 1944, and spoke in Central Park on the subject, it was called The Spirit of Liberty. And the spirit of liberty is that you, you're not sure that you're always right, okay? So the spirit of liberty is not too sure that you're right, and the spirit of liberty is wanting to know what's in the minds of other men and women. So let's, let's involve everyone, let's have that spirit of liberty, maybe. I don't see anymore, it's, things are changing, I think this is like a post-culture now we're in. This is, something happened somewhere, and we're, it's sort of an after aftermath of all that, and I don't know where it's, where we're going. So what else? I had to say that, oh, Mr. Sweeney's ruling today, or, well, it's not a ruling, I think he wants to put it up for a vote, that he wants the hospitals to, to donate or have a community service fee, which is absolutely ridiculous, and, I mean, we let them off the hook a little too easy, so that's for sure. As for, as for Kathy's temper tantrum last time we were here, I just want her to know that, you know, it's in those tapes, because I came to this podium and, and brought up and brought up that subject several times. So if I mistakenly said that the one tape is where you, uh, suggested that you were happy with the agreement we already had, I, I apologize. I am, I stand corrected, I have no problem making a mistake. It's you that does. And I don't know if you have the temperament to be on the council the way you spoke last, last time.
Thank you, thank you for your apology, Mr. Servo.
Okay. Well, and, and, and the way you spoke, not only calling me a liar out loud, because one thing I'm not is a liar, okay? I'm a lot of things, but I have honesty, uh, which I stand behind, okay? Uh, so, uh, when you do that, and then you said, oh, anyone can come to the mic and say what they want. Yes, they can. They can come to this mic and say what they want. So you're not going to censor that, although this is becoming somewhat of a censored type of meeting, okay? So, um, I, I, I did have a, a thing or two else to say, um, and, um, well, let's talk about goodness, because, uh, Mr. Trost brought up good and concept in the same paragraph. So, uh, you know, the Greeks, the ancient Greeks thought of goodness as moving society forward. So let's do things good, let's think about good things, let's do good things, okay? And, and Henry David Thoreau said that goodness, okay, is the best investment because it never fails. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Next, please. Happy New Year, Chris.
Happy New Year, everybody. Chris Coley, Prospect Ave. Uh, this'll be a two-phase, it'll go into the one I love to talk about. I went to pick up my granddaughter today from the library, not knowing that Main Street was closed. Is it possible that on that TV channel that we're going to get someday, they can put up a geographic picture to say, this street is closed, this street is closed, you have to go this way? Or we just gonna let? It took me 45 minutes to go from the top of Prospect, pick her up and bring her home. It was unbelievable. She said, I, I called, when I called her today, I'm coming to get you, is, is there construction? He goes, no, it started after you made the phone call, they put up the lights, they shut the streets off. It would be nice if we could have that TV stuck. Uh, this, the other one I have is on the, the Mr., um, the 70s, oh, another town has done this for years, I brought it up once before but never had a council, that maybe during two weeks prior to Christmas, we can not charge people to park at the meter spots and give them a, so that you can entice people to come shop at the Main Street by not charging them. Maybe enforce the hour, there must be a way to do it. Hackensack, the sake doesn't, they put paper bags over all the meters, and it says, from the, uh, city council, Merry Christmas to all they don't pay, uh, for parking. The other thing is, the last one I have is on the Eric Anderson, uh, site. The real reason the wood is up there is because he doesn't have to pay rental for the fencing that's supposed to be there. And it's his own fence, it's made out of cheap wood, the other construction site has a fence, and he also has rare, those, the road dividers, so nobody's car can go into that area and fall into that hole. I think that's wrong and it should be corrected. And the last one I have is, I'm very happy to hear about the building department, the little report, but we also know how many inspectors there are, what the, how many permits are given out, how many secretaries they do. Now, I worked for the health department, we had three inspectors, we do birth certificates, death certificates, marriage certificates, we do inspections also, we also take people to court, and, and we do all, and do, we do all those complaints. I think it would be, it sounds like the building department is the winning department in this city. The police don't do anything, the fire department doesn't do anything, the health department? Nobody does any work except, God bless that building department, and all I hear about-
I'd like to, if, can I address that for you, just real quick? There was, we were asked if reports on the building department at every meeting, that's why that's done.
It's actually just code enforcement.
It's, it's code en- code enforcement, not just building, it's basically code enforcement. It was asked by public-
Health department doesn't do any-
What's that?
Health department doesn't do any code enforcement.
Somebody complained that we weren't giving out any code enforcement issue, or weren't doing code enforcement issues, so we gave a report, we do a, a report every two weeks, showing that we do. It was a request from the public, that's why we do it. No other reason. Otherwise, you wouldn't hear boo about it.
If you come, uh, when I give the annual report for 2015, we will have all those statistics.
Because it's just empty, it's just empty facts.
I understand that.
This way or that way, it doesn't mean they could be doing twice what they're doing, or they could be doing less than what they're doing, it's just the numbers. So I have to believe 11 is a great number, maybe they should be doing 30. Inspections, I had to do a certain amount of inspections per year by law of my restaurants.
That's correct.
Three or four per restaurant, and we have close to 400, so multiply that by how many inspections our department did. And we don't get no, no credit, no statistics here, uh, of, of what we do per year, and I think that's wrong.
Chris, it's, it's not about credit towards the building department or the code enforcers, it's not about credit for that.
The general public doesn't know that.
It's about justification of their work because they were being questioned, that's why.
Well, then maybe we should press it, uh, maybe you should say that prior to, because they're not doing their job correctly, we are now notifying the public of what they do do.
Nobody, nobody, well, somebody, nobody here said they weren't doing their job correctly, we just wanted to specify, we put the report out there so we, you know, people know what's going on.
But that's how the public would interpret it.
Do you want me to go and check? I'll be, I'll be happy to stop, stop reporting on it, because it's, uh, kind of been inconvenient.
No, I can see that. But that's all I had. Thank you.
Thank you. Happy New Year, Ms. Davis.
Happy New Year.
How are you?
Okay. Is this open? I came in late, is this just-
No, it's okay.
Okay. Uh, I just have a question regarding the, um, building inspections, because I've, I had this happen with my mom's property. I don't know who would be in charge, whether this is part of the court system or the city council. I've always felt that people who have issues with their property, be it maintenance, be it painting, whatever, does not belong in the same courtroom while you're sitting there with people who are being charged with criminal offenses. I, 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 I wished there was some way they could be separated, a separate type of a hearing, because it's very offensive to sit there, and you have to wait until everybody else, everybody from the prison they've spoken to, because they need interpreters. I just don't think the two match to be in the same courtroom. I think if there's an issue with a building issue, it could be handled in a separate meeting with either somebody from the building department, but not in a courtroom setting. That's just-
I would defer to council on that one.
Unfortunately, there's only one municipal court, and criminal matters take priority. And then when you have interpreters, they take part. Uh, so I, I understand what you're saying, there, unless it rises to the level of a landlord and tenant matter, in which case you'd be in the Superior Court, Special Civil Court.
My question is, why does it have to be in a criminal court to begin with?
There is only one court. Municipal court is the only court.
It handles everything.
It's not a criminal offense.
It handles domestic complaints, handles-
It handles everything up to a certain level. If it's, if it's real, really heavy duty criminal, then it would be in the Superior Court.
My, my question is, I don't think someone who didn't paint their home or forgot to put signs at their home, whatever, is a criminal offense.
Well, it's not a criminal, not a criminal offense.
But it's, it's a, right.
An ordinance violation, but there's only one court.
It's an ordinance violation, but there's only one court.
All the matters, unfortunately, that's where they go, to the municipal court.
Well, I hope in the future there's some way we can find out another way to do that, because it, just to me, does not belong in the same courtroom.
There might be a way to, uh-
You'd have to add a separate-
Have a hearing with the, with the-
To handle, well, I'm not, certainly not going to tell the municipal court judge what to do, but the-
That would be up to them, because we, we do not, the council does not handle what the courts do, as far, I mean, they're autonomous to us?
The courts are actually-
For a good reason?
Municipal courts are actually run by the state.
But who makes the decision, what is a criminal offense? Who ma-
We don't make the decision, we probably could maybe ask or recommend, or suggest, maybe-
I think in 2016, maybe that can be looked into, what is actually a criminal offense and should be settled there, what could be settled there.
The problem, the problem with that, Ms. Davis, is once you start separating-
Cases.
You have a court for every, you have a court for violations on your home, for, for maintenance, you have a court for the, you end up with so many different courts, you'd have to have, my God, it, it could turn into five, six different courts.
It's just a suggestion.
And then if there's no violations, you have people there for nothing, getting, you know, getting paid, if there's no violations. I mean, that's, that's probably why there's one municipal court to handle all, all the issues. I understand your point, it is a game.
Right, I just wish there's another way to settle it.
If you got an issue because your grass was too high and you gotta go pay, go down there and you want to fight it, you gotta sit through hours and hours of, of, you know-
Right. Well, I have parents who are deceased, and now we have issues with their property, you know? And we have to go down to court, take off a day of work, to go sit down there for three and four hours, to be the last one to be seen, and it's just very annoying, um, to be even in that mist. Thank you.
It would be very hard to set up days for each type of-
Offense.
Offense that's out there, it'd be very hard to do. That's, that's just my opinion. Anybody else like to speak? Seeing none, motion closed to the public.
Au revoir.
Roll call.
Councilmember Vitaglia?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Councilmember Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Kealan Gettis?
Aye.
Mayor LaBross?
Aye.
Anybody from the podium, from the dais?
Well, the only thing I can say that, for instance, many times the people get here and they complain about taxes, and they have to realize that, for instance, four out of five here, we pay taxes too. And in no way that I am in co-hood with the developers or something that I'm going to favor them, and then my taxes are going to go higher and higher. I don't want to pay taxes either, but that's the rules, and we are working in some kind of way that eventually maybe the taxes are going to stay there, and why not? Maybe by '21, '22, maybe we can pay less. But right now, we are paying whatever the administration did, and that's part of the game. So I would love to pay less, but, uh, no matter who's going to be here, they're going to continue with the same game. We have to pay taxes, and that way we can pay for the services that, right now, we got from police, firemen, teachers, and everybody else. And in no way that we're going to say, oh, we're going to reduce the taxes, that's never going to happen. We're going to try to control the situation, try to have a better plan, we're not perfect, we make mistakes, but, uh, the goal right now is to try to get to a point that the taxes remain there, to try to get more revenue from all these buildings, and try to watch what we spend, and then the situation is going to be better, but that's going to take time. Why the reason the people don't come before for the last 20 years and complain about the way the other people was spending the money, and all the debt that they create, that now we have to pay? And that's part of the problem. So, thank you for coming, a Happy New Year.
I'd also like to wish everyone a Happy New Year, and look forward to having a good 2016 here in our great city of Hackensack. Um, just a, a few words about the boards. We talked a little bit about this at the Committee of the Whole Meeting, uh, we're in the process, again, as we do every January, of going through and looking at what board appointments are up and going through our reappointments. Uh, first of all, I want to thank everyone who applied, uh, I want to thank everyone who, his term was expired and took the time to say, yes, I'm going to redo this again and sign back up again. And for those that couldn't do it because they had other demands, we still want to thank you for the years of service that you did put in. Uh, we still have a few board appointments that we need to fill, so we are going to be posting what board appointments are still open, yes, David? So we're going to update what's on our website, so if you're still interested, we can let you know what additional boards are still open. Uh, we have a number of, uh, new residents that have applied for the first time, and, and that was great news. So we're going to be in the process of doing some interviews over the next week or so. So should you have applied and you hear from us, and, you know, about a phone call, that's what it is, a chance to come in and meet us and discuss, you know, what your ideas are and, and where you would really like to be, uh, which of the boards makes the most sense for you. So hopefully by our next council meeting, we'll be making the, uh, the list of the appointments and announcing them for everyone. Um, everyone here, you know, and, and folks listening at home, want to be part of this, want your voice to be heard, this is a great way to do it. I mean, the more voices that, the more people that contribute on these boards, the, the better it is for all of us. I mean, what to do with recreation, what to do with new cultural arts on new boards, our new veterans board, I mean, it's planning board, zoning board, it's a way to have your voice in the government. So again, take a look at what's out there, and if you want to apply, we'll be happy to interview you, talk to you, and, and hopefully find a good fit for you here in the city. Thanks again, everyone, have a good night.
David? Deb?
Happy New Year to everyone. The new year gives us a opportunity to do better in all aspects of our lives, and, um, I just thank you all for coming out on this cold night, and thank you for having a quick meeting tonight. Thank you.
Yes. Yes, thank you, it was a quick meeting tonight. Happy New Year to everybody, uh, again, looking forward to a good new year. Again, comments on, yeah, nobody on this council's, uh, in developers' pockets or vice versa. I mean, that's, that's ridiculous to make those accusations, to say that we're doing things for the developers, favoring, I mean, if you look at every pilot, we've done one pilot so far, basically, or solidified two, two pilots, they, basically those two pilots quadrupled, quadrupled in the first year, the amount of tax revenue that was coming from those properties. So anybody could tell me that that's a bad thing, I, I, I just, I have to question that. Again, the development is, is, is the key to our success. Looking forward to within the next month, I believe, Meridia will be open.
Yes.
Um, start renting out, I know the rental office is open, uh, looking forward to seeing how that goes. I'm sure every developer around is looking to see how this first building goes. Um, my guess is it'll go pretty quickly. Those apartments are very reasonable, from what I've heard, and, uh, it's a nice little building, I've, I've heard the inside is gorgeous. Um, the fence, again, everything about that fence is legal, no, you know, I've had more